All right, we got a call. Call to meeting order, please. Um, you can see who's here. Jason and Dr. McFadden aren't here currently.
This is gonna be a fun one.
Item next on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Teresa. Next on the agenda, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Be mindful that you have three minutes to which to make your inquiries. Also, be mindful that you may not get a response from your inquiries tonight. And last but not least, I ask that you address all comments to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments. Yes?
I just want to let the general public know that the person who usually takes the minutes is sick tonight, and so they're unable to be here. And I am assuming is the superintendent, taking that, so the superintendent is going to have to play a double role tonight. So if the audience noses some pauses or other questions, they have to take into consideration that the superintendent has to do two jobs tonight rather than just one because of the absence due to health issues of the person who usually does the minutes.
And it's live TV, and you can't change live TV. Chair, the agenda is... Thank you, Mr. Brewley. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
Good evening. Carl Hay, 21 Second Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan. Just wanted to say I'm excited that there's a brand-new school year starting. I like some of the things that I've seen so far. I now have two children that are in this school system. We took our daughter out of the school. We were gonna put her in and brought her over to Seminole just because I did not want to be a part of the problem by wanting to see things change and taking money away from the school district. Would just like to announce Study Hall to Ball will be starting next week at two locations, both the library across the street as well as, once again, at the Jermaine Jackson Center. Also, we are trying to partner with the Antoine Arts Center to put together a music program to teach children. So any letters of support that we could get from anybody on the board would be greatly appreciated. We have some of the funding already. We're writing a grant to get the rest of it. It will be free to all students in Mount Clemens, and after the first year, we hope to open it to the entire county. But that will be starting in January, as it looks, and they will be able to learn piano, guitar, drums, as well as audio engineering. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Mr. Brewley.
As a citizen, but also can we ask for a standing moment of silence to remember Mr. Ford, who was very helpful to the school, I know on the last millage, but I think throughout his entire life.
No problem, sir. At the request, member Brewley, the board would have a moment of silent observation of past city commissioner, past Bather, real advocate in the community, real strong supporter of the school system in the community, city commissioner Bill Ford. Thank you. Mr. Brewley.
So we're done with citizen comments?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to add an executive session at the very last agenda item of the evening to deal with a personnel issue.
It's been moved by Mr. Brewley to add to the executive session at the end of the meeting, an executive session for the purpose of a personnel issue. Second by Dr. McFadden. Questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none? Call roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr...uh, Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. That will be, um...
Be before, I think.
Item H, right before the board comments. Seventeen H. Well, actually, it'll be eighteen because it's not a report. So eighteen would be the executive session. Nineteen would be board comments. Twenty would be adjournment. Okay. Next on the agenda, consent, item five, the consent agenda. Under the...I'm sorry. We don't have the minutes.
Yes, we need to remove the minutes.
Okay. Which minutes? Both sets of minutes?
Yes.
Due to the fact that the superintendent's secretary has taken ill, we will have to remove consent agenda item five A, approval of the minutes for July 21st, 2019, and the August 12th, 2019 workshop. We'll bring those back to a future meeting for adoption approval. Consent agenda, item B, approval of bills for payment. Chair would entertain a motion. Are you moving? Raise your hand to move.
So move.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Second. Ms. Walker? Sorry about that.
Yep.
Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Any comments from the per... Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair.
We went over all the bills for payment and found everything to be in order at our committee meeting.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none? Call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item six, personnel. Approve new hires for 2019-2020 employment. A, collective bargaining agreement, staff positions. Chair would entertain a motion relative to item six.
Move for approval?
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Second, Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Any comments from the personnel committee?
Well, Mr. Monk had a...
Yes, sir.
...comment. Well, I just saw with the approval, I was just noticing in my midnight reading that there was a typo error in... Because these are legal binding documents. If I can find it. For the... For the offering for Scott Perriman. We need to change the wording for Mount Clemens Middle School.
Good catch.
Because I do read everything.
Is there a consent... Oh, that's a typo, right? So it's not...no. Doesn't change the context of the contract or the agreement.
Mr. Chair, the personnel committee, we did talk about these positions at our last meeting. No questions. All these positions are needed. So we move forward, and it's recommended that we approve the process of these new hires.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions on the motion on the floor? With the correction to the contract, Scott Perriman as listed. Seeing or hearing none? Call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item seven, Henry Ford School-Based Health Center Construction/Improvement Contract. Chair would entertain a motion relative. Mr. Brewley.
I would move to approve this. This was brought up at our...I'll discuss it after a second.
Moved by Mr. Brewley to approve the Henry Ford School-Based Health Center Construction Improvement Contract. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Mr. Brewley.
Yeah, this was brought up at our meeting, and the monies for this are a grant to the school district. So the building will be improved, but it will be improved through a grant, not through any general fund monies as such. It will allow for people to access health care through a private entrance so that people will have their privacy maintained at a part of the building where you can enter from the street without even accessing this part of the building. The health program does service our students, but it can also service members of the general public. And for any further information, you could talk to our superintendent or call the health center.
And just to piggyback on what Mr. Brewley said, he was saying that entrances, separate entrances, that way, the normal operations, the ebb and flow of the daily operation of the school district is not interfered with by other people coming into the building that aren't coming to be part of the school. So...and some other improvements to the building that they will access.
Got one question.
Mr. Monk?
Just for education for myself, in the paragraph is where it says, "In the addition above, we'll also recommend a budgeting construction contingency." Is that something Henry Ford has? Or is that something that we have, and we haven't given to Henry Ford? How does that work?
No. What that means is, right before they pay the final penny, they will hold $15,000 of the final payment to make sure that everything is in order and that everything has been instructed appropriately.
Okay.
After the punch list issue, things are done. That's when you give them that contingency. Yes, sir.
Now, I just want to make sure there's clarity because I was approached by a couple individuals in the community, and they thought that Henry Ford was buying the old high school building, and that is incorrect. They are not buying the old high school building. They're improving the space that they have now. So if anybody in the community believes that we're selling it to Henry Ford, that is incorrect. That is not true. That's a false. Henry Ford Health Clinic has health clinics, I believe, in Pontiac School District, Mount Clemens.
Fitzgerald.
Fitzgerald.
Servileton Detroit.
Servileton. So nothing new. They're not buying the Mount Clemens High School old building. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Any additional questions, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none? Call roll, please.
Mr. Brewley? Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item eight, tax sheltered annuity third-party provider. Chair would...
I just want to make a comment.
Sure.
On this one, I was waiting back to hear from the vice president of GLP. There were a couple questions that were asked, and I didn't hear back from him as of today, so...
Mr. Brewley.
I would like to move this agenda item for October.
Send it back to the committee?
Not send it back to the committee.
Postpone it until...okay.
Yeah.
Okay. It's been moved to place agenda item eight, the tax sheltered annuity third-party provider. Postpone that till the October meeting. Support. Second by Dr. McFadden. Any questions, discussion, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none? Call roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item nine, enhancement millage.
Okay. This one is a board resolution. The county is looking at a county-wide enhancement millage, and it would be up with $400 per pupil for Mount Clemens. And what it would do is, we'll levy a tax, a millage countywide. And if it passes, all of the children in Macomb County would benefit, and each school district could use the funds as they saw fit. And especially since our government in Lansing has not passed a budget yet, and we really don't know where our funds, how much we will be getting. The county believes this is an appropriate time to support a regional enhancement millage for the students of Mount Clemens, not only Mount Clemens but of the county. And they're asking, or we're asking, that the board passes a resolution supporting such.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Okay. First, let me check. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Walker. Second.
Support.
Second, Mrs. Escalante. Any questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Brewley.
Yeah, my understanding of this proposal is that it needs to be passed by a majority of the school districts representing a majority of the students in the county, that it would only be placed on the ballot for the March election if, in fact, there is a March election, which we think there will be. It would be county-wide, all citizens vote on it. It would be distributed on the basis of the number of students that you have. And so it'd be fairly distributed across the county. This is done in a couple of other counties. Wayne County has one and a couple of others. And it allows you, then, each school district, to help improve whatever their particular need would be. But just because we pass it this evening doesn't mean it will happen. Since we probably have one of the lowest student populations, we're part of it, but it will need to be passed by other school boards countywide. And so this is just the really beginning of the process. And if we reach the number of school boards that do pass it sufficiently, then at that point, I think we should do a program on it at one of our board meetings and go in detail about what it would and what it would not do.
Any additional questions, comments?
Yeah, I got one more thing to say about this. So I want to make sure it's clear. The way it was presented, this is not a county-led military project. Because it sounded like the county is making this happen. This is with the school districts within the county. So that's what we're doing, and the money is not earmarked for. We can do whatever we want with it, but it's earmarked for what we can do for our needs and not under stipulations. So just in case there's no clarity on who initiated spearheading this or what it's needed for, what the price is, that's what it's about. And the money goes across all districts.
And there was, like, $439 or something there about for... About what we would receive. I think...
It would depend on the valuation at that time of property.
Right, right, yeah. And I think the enhancement is like 1.9 mills or something like that. I should have figured out what that would be to homeowner of $100,000. We can...if this...as this moves forward, that could be some of the things that are discussed.
Right. At that point, if another other... If enough other school districts do it, then I think we should come in with details about what it would be for us, what it would cost, what it would mean, and those sorts of things, yes.
I know this is an initiative by the school districts themselves in Macomb County. Do...is there a finite number of school districts that need... We need in order to buy into the...
Fifty-one percent.
Fifty-one percent.
Of the districts who represent 50.1% of the students. So you need a majority of the districts to represent a majority of the students.
And so that, after the individual school boards either vote this up or support or not support. If we support it, then it's put on the primary ballot. That's the presidential primary election.
In March.
In March. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none? Call roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item ten, under the informational items. Mr. Monk, policies for first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Rickman.
You have my... Mr. Brewley, it's right underneath your packet?
Yeah.
Okay, you got it.
Um, we have three policies that we are bringing to the board for first reading and the process of adopting these policies. One, where they both deal with leave of absence, paid medical leave of absence for administrators, professional staff, and also support staff. So we also talked about this at the workshop in detail also what we did in our committee meeting. So I would entertain any questions if anybody may have pertaining to these three policies. The first policy is 1430. The second policy is 3430. And the third policy is 4430. All are dealing with leave of absence, which is now called PMLA, which is Paid Medical Leave Absence.
So we're based on, just briefly looking through this, we're on page 3430, page two of five. We're indicating option two?
Yes, option two, not option one.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right.
And it's really the same language in all three. It's just that it hits all three of our personnel.
Got you, got you, okay.
And this is a law that actually took into... It actually went into effect nationwide on March 29th of this year. So all school districts are... As any school district dealing with the law, you know, we need to pass it. But for us, we don't have any employees that are listed under this, that this particular law would affect. But we are passing this to be proactive going forward.
Get in the mix.
Okay. So they did that one off.
It's already wasn't here. Messed up.
No worries.
Any questions, Mr. Monk, regarding the first reading of policy 1430, policy 3430, and policy 4430? Did you have any... Any other questions for the chair? This is the first reading, so...
Yeah, it's first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Monk.
Thank you.
Let's see. Item 11. I'm sorry.
I know it's under information, but when you have a first reading of something, usually you do vote on. Because that accomplishes the first official reading. You have to do it twice. In the past, I think even we've done that. I think as an...it's just not informational.
Well, that means it has to be moved up on the action item.
Well, yeah, in the future, but we can move, you know. It can be moved.
Yeah, I just think that it's not a really informational item because this is the first reading, and then we have a second reading, and then that's when it becomes effective. But we're approving the language in the first reading as it was brought to our workshop.
Well, from my understanding, the language is improved in the second reading with also adoption, so it doesn't have to be an action item on the first reading because it's brought, because it's up to negotiation.
It could be changed.
Right. And then that's why there's a second reading. If it is changed, there's a second reading, and that's when it's a file.
I think procedurally, you gotta have a...
We'll check. I'll call...we'll get with Neola and make sure.
I'm having a brain freeze.
Yeah, I'm...yeah.
I think less Neola, and it's more procedural parliamentary-wise that when we vote on this, we voted on these things twice. And you do a first reading, and then you do the second reading. In the legislative process, they do the same thing. There's a first reading, introduction of the bill, the second reading of the bill, and they go to a third reading. And that's when they have final adoption.
We used to go in third.
And there's those, that process. So there's a form... But anyway, I just think you need to...
No, no, that's a good point. I'll make a phone call to my policy person that I contact.
I mean, just to be...you know, we can move to...
Oh, we can move it to first. For action item 10?
Just in...
Do I need to make a motion to...
Possibility, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Do I need to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So I move to move informational item 10 into action item 10 for policy, for first readings for policy 1430, 3430, and 4430.
It's been moved by Mr. Monk to approve the first reading of policies 4013, 3430, and 4430. Is there a second? Second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Jarrett. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none? Call roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Item 11, August 2019 Cash Flow Report. Are there any questions? Notice is probably gone over in the business committee.
It was.
Seeing no questions? Item 12, Open Purchase Order Listings.
That also was gone over in the committee and found everything to be in order.
Very good. Any additional questions? Personnel, item 13, Personnel Report. Any questions?
We went over Personnel Committee. We talked about the stuff that needs to be approved on contracts that go with stuff tonight, so nothing new.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you. Contract listings. Any questions regarding the contract listings? Mr. Brewley?
I'm not sure, and it may be just the height listed, but I'm not sure we have the ones that were approved last meeting for the principals and the statistician, they were one-year contracts. They may be listed here under something that I'm not seeing, but-
Yes, it's under staffing, since building admin, central office.
Where are they, pardon me?
It's about, do you see GFL? Go down about, right under service, you'll see on the far left, it says type, and then there's staffing. You see Trune Law, Ronald Northfleet?
Yeah.
Okay, go all the way down to building admin, central office staff.
Can we just have a listing of what that is? I'm just saying for the public, it would be helpful too, to know what kinds of contracts those are.
So would you require that of all of the teaching staff as well?
No, no, we have the union contract listed. No, we have, these are outside the union, the bargaining unit. Bargaining unit is listed down here with the appropriate dates. So I think all those contracts are on the same date. But if we had a situation where they weren't, then, so I think they should be listed in, with those dates in case.
They're all, all of them in the same date.
Then you could list them all with the same date.
That's what I did. That's why it says, it says principals and central services.
Right.
And it says 2020, June 30. And we've done the same thing-
I think it would be important for people to know that's the high school principal, that's Seminole, that's the statistician, the data person, what that means. It just happens they're all on that same contractual year. That doesn't mean that that has to be in the future.
No, they would be. They would be. Just for school year. And yes, I'm reluctant to list that out, because if we're gonna do it for one, we'll have to do it for all. And I don't feel comfortable doing it with the teaching staff, and I certainly don't feel comfortable doing it with individual administrators listing theirs. We put it in as one group.
Well, you don't need their name. I'm not asking for people's names.
Okay.
I'm asking for the position for which we have a contract. We have a bargaining unit. All the teaching staff are in the bargaining unit, and that's when that happens. I don't think we have to list people's names, but position.
Okay.
That, those contracts are falling under, that's under the personnel committee, right?
Yes.
All right, let's, let's discuss that in the personnel committee.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
I got two. One for GFS, I see that's coming up for renewal. Have we always been in a three-year contract, or, and this is one I'm getting at, because our numbers are looking good. Is it to our advantage not to get into a loan contract based on what's happening as far as us being in a better position to go out and find somebody better and not settle, because we will be in a better financial position to bargain a little bit tougher as far as what we will pay and what- Hopefully I'm explaining that right.
Well, we do send out to bid for these, for these contracts, and we do have the folks sent in, because we have to tell them how often we want it picked up and what locations. And then they'll send us and respond to the RFP, saying that this is what they would charge us.
No, not to charge them as far as the length of the contract. Do we have to be in a three-year, can we go to a one-year, or can we go to a two-year, or has it just been always standard to be in a three-year? I don't know.
Well, it goes between a three and a five-year, so-
So three is a minimum?
Yes, and-
It's not cost, I mean, it's really not a good deal to get a one-year contract.
Well, no, I'm not saying, I'm just asking, yeah.
Chasing contracts.
Because we will be coming out of, you know what I'm saying, we'll be looking better financially.
But that's still a competitive bid process.
Well, that's why I was asking, is it, has it always been a three? I don't know. So has it always been a three-year, or has it, I don't, I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it just depends on what they submit. And if it's beneficial for us to go for a five-year, then we will, because if they don't increase their price by a substantial amount, we will go with the longer timeframe. But all of them, this time around, submitted a three-year contract.
And that's the same thing with Moreno's landscaping, because I see we're in a four-year contract with them.
Yes, because they said they would not increase for the four years, and so we wanted to lock it in.
Okay.
And they did have, so because we always go with the better, with the lowest amount for the responsible bidder. And sometimes the lowest amount isn't a responsible bidder, so we don't go with that company. So we have to weigh all of those. And just because we're in a financial situation, that does not deter us from just settling. And we make sure that we are getting a better deal, because no matter what, we're still paying. And so we're not trying to slight our services, or getting less service because of our financial. That way we get a better service, because we know our money is, it has to be purposefully spent and with, with responsibility. Responsibility, yeah.
Said you had two. Said you had two.
Yeah, double. I did GFS and Moreno.
Oh, okay. Okay. Any additional questions, comments? Seeing, hearing none, item 15, superintendent's comments.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that we do have a football game this coming Saturday. It's an away game, and it's at seven o'clock in the evening. Our football players are undefeated, and no one's been able to score against them. So, gold bathers. Also, we have a volleyball game tomorrow, as a matter of fact, and it is away, and it's with Michigan Collegiate, and that's at five o'clock. I just wanted to remind everybody to support our sports teams. Also, just a reminder for our teachers that we do have the Michigan Education Foundation grant opportunities, and that information is in our office, and the, a number of our teachers have applied for this grant in the past, and it has helped a number of our classrooms, and so that is out there and is available. And, sure, just wanted to draw your attention to putting your packet. It's from House Representative Lori Stone. She's gonna be doing some community conversations, and her first one is gonna be on Monday, the 23rd, at, from 6:30 to 7:30, and she's gonna be at the Curbies Coney Island. And she has several of them listed, so we'll make sure we get these dates posted on the website for our community that's interested in hearing or speaking with Ms. Stone. And as Mr. Hay mentioned, we are, well, it was Anton Art Center is applying for a grant through the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation to get music education enrichment for our students. And I just wanted to acknowledge that we are working with Mr. Gilcrest with Anton Art Center. So we're looking forward to that. Also, in your packet, you have a memo from Trune Law, and different districts had asked about their policy services, and they're just giving us an update on some of their services that they are working on, is getting that up and running, and they're not giving anyone a start date when they will be available to offer their service. But they are looking at the end of the calendar year. So once we know more about that and check out their prices as compared to Neola, I will bring, let you guys know about, more about that one. And with Trinity Transportation, this has definitely been a very rough start this year. And we had hoped that their management team would be out today, but this is the same week that they were, they have company, I think it's training in Chicago or Indiana. But anyway, they do plan to be here at our next board meeting, and they did send the board a letter of apology that this is not the way they wanted the year to start off, and they take our concerns very seriously, and they very much want it to be here. But they said that they do plan to be here at the October board meeting to address the issues and set their, a calendar for even this coming year, so that in, I think it'll be May, they'll at least contact parents to make sure that they have correct addresses and get this information to them before the end of the school year. And we'll definitely be at our back-to-school bash, because they want to hit any issues off early instead of waiting until a week or day before school starts. Okay, our enrollment. We are, we ended last year at 1,048 students, and our enrollment is up right now. We've been having an average of 90% attendance. So as of today, we had 994 students actually attending today, and that means bodies in the seats. But enrolled, we have over 1,100 students, so we're pleased with our count right now. So we are monitoring this every day. And, but on average, we've had 90% of the students in the seats each day. With that, just want to wish Joy Metz a quick recovery. She's, as we said, in the hospital, and so we're just excited for her to return. I miss you, Joy. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Ms. Brewley?
Can we just get some clarity, because I don't want to leave people with the impression. So we have, how many students you're, because I think your attendance report was appreciated, by me at least. How many students did we have attend today? Or yesterday, or?
Said 994.
So 994. And even though we said that we had more students last year, we budgeted on the basis of only having 950.
Correct.
So our budget is based on that. So we anticipated possible lower student enrollment. And so nothing that we have in place needs to be disrupted. Nothing that we have in place teacher-wise, classroom-wise, or anything else needs to be disrupted at all. And I think the superintendent should get credit for that. We took a very conservative approach of reducing numbers of students from what we had to what we thought we would get, and that puts the board in a very good financial position, and it puts everyone in the school district where there doesn't have to be any ripples of problems due to student enrollment at all. And, and I think that was very good on the superintendent's part to do that budgeting.
Additional question, comments? Next, committee reports. Any additional reports from the business committee?
No, I think we covered everything earlier. I don't think we've covered anything else. Am I missing at the meeting? No? No?
Any questions of the chair? All right, policy committee.
Well, I have two. First of all, I just want to let, and this is for the general public. We have a lot of policies and procedures that, that we operate this district by. And most of those policies and procedures are law. Federal, state, local law that we need to pass to keep us from being in court. But it also allows us to run this district the way it should be ran. So I want to say thank you to my fellow board members, and also relay a message from Neola. When we spoke with him last, he actually made a comment that the Mount Clemens past boards years ago didn't do such a good job. But he is thoroughly impressed by what we are doing now and how we are staying up to date on all of our policies and procedures going forward. I want to give a special thanks to all my committee members for being diligent in what they do, and it's time-consuming. Some of these policies are 15, 20 pages long, and we have to read through each and every paragraph to make sure everything is, is correct when we bring it to first and second reading. So I just want to say thank you to this board for being diligent in what you do in order for us to stay up on what we need to stay up on in order for this district to run the way it should run. So those are my comments, thank you.
Any questions of the chair? Thank you. Curriculum personnel, any additional information?
No additional information.
Any questions of the chair? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Immunity Coalition, Mr. Lenenberry is not here. I don't know if Mr. Roberts has, did he fill him in on? All right. Any questions? Legislative Committee, there was no formal meeting, but there is in the rumor mill that there's agreement for K-12 educational budget that might be released tomorrow. That, that's all the information we have, is there's, it's rumored that there is a deal, agreement for the K-12 budget. But it was, it was agreed upon too late to make it public, so they're waiting to make it public tomorrow. So we'll see what tomorrow brings. Okay, Athletic Ad-Hoc Committee.
Was no meeting.
No meeting, thank you, sir. There were, there was no Educational Foundation meeting. Which brings us to Agenda Item 18, which is to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel discussion. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. McFattan to go into executive session for the purposes of a personnel matter. Is there a second?
Support.
Support, Mrs. Walker. Any questions, discussions on the motion on the floor? Once the board comes on to executive session, we will complete the remainder of the two items on the agenda. Call a roll for on the motion to go into executive session, please.
Dr. McFattan?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. The board goes into executive session at 7:23. Chair would entertain a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Jarrett, seconded by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor, come out of executive session? Call roll, please.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFattan?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes. The meeting is back in order at 7:54 PM. Next on the agenda, board comments. We'll start with Mrs. Jarrett this evening. We'll start with Mrs. Jarrett this evening.
Well, I'm very happy that the school year started and started really well and strong and welcome back Bathers. I want to wish all the students a great year and I look forward to hearing about all the wonderful things you guys are doing this year and all the milestones you're going to be making. So, um, go Bathers.
Thank you, Mrs., thank you, Mrs. Jarrett. Mrs. Escalante?
I hope everybody has had a great start to the school year. There's lots of good things going on and I, I think we all feel pretty optimistic about the changes. And I just want to say thank you to everybody across the board. Uh, my colleagues here, um, staff, teachers, everybody. Everybody that works together to make this district what it is. I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work and that it doesn't go unnoticed. And I also want to give a shout-out to my policy chair, Mr. Monk. You kind of recognized us, but he's kind of the man behind the scenes with policy. This man, like, I will never be chair on Policy Committee. I'm saying that on the record, on camera. Because first of all.
Forget about the phone calls, we'll do it our.
Right. No, but, and all jokes aside, he puts a lot of time and effort and he leads us. And we just kind of follow him and he guides us. So, I wanted to make sure you got credit for that because you're an amazing chair at policy. So, thank you. And um, those are my comments. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Mr. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to welcome back the students, staff and everybody to a twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year. Got some new faces, looking for some big things. Mount Clemens is happening. It is happening. So, uh, wish everybody a well-prepared summer to get ready for the school year. And just want to say welcome back to everybody and good luck and go Bathers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Mr. Brew.
Um, I, I want to share all the good wishes everyone else did, but I also want to, as a board member, apologize to the community for the busing situation. It's something that we take very seriously. We heard people's comments. It's something that should not have happened. I know the Superintendent has tried diligently to work with his company and we will see the company in person. And we will try to put into force guidelines that will make the company and the board and the schools very aware, way ahead of time. So that when we begin the school year next year, we will not have any of the problems. But I just wanted to say that we all are sorry for that happening for folks. It shouldn't be that way. And we intend to do our best to correct it and make sure it never happens again.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Mrs. Walker?
Well, everyone, welcome back. And I was fortunate enough to be able to um, read at Seminole for a Friday morning and had a fabulous time. The school was fabulous. Kids were awesome, staff was awesome, it was wonderful. And then I went to the middle school, high school, open house here. Same experience. It was packed, great food, great pizza. We, and the football team. Oh! Yay, go Bathers! So, they're fabulous. So, we are a district on the move and in a very good direction. So, it's going to be a great year and I invite anybody to come try us out. It, you will not be disappointed. It is fabulous here. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Dr. McFadden?
Well, my comments are very simple. Mount Clemens is not about just sports. We are about academics and curriculum. And we are making changes. We got a team together that we are putting our foot to the pedal. But nonetheless, we are going to talk about sports tonight because um, I do coach football every now and then. And in Division Six, Michigan Collegiate is ranked fourth. Division Eight, Mount Clemens ranked seventh. So, Friday night is going to be probably.
Saturday.
Is it Saturday?
Yes.
That's not better for me because I got bear kudos. But um.
Seven PM.
Damn, it's hopeless Friday. Okay, nonetheless, uh, Saturday night.
Saturday night.
Seven PM. It's going to be, um, under the lights, it's going to be a battle. So, if you want to see a good football game, at least get some entertainment, come on out. Nonetheless, go Bathers. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Well, it seems like two weeks ago that it was June and we were, students were graduating and we were wishing everybody to have a, a great summer and go out on the boat and get some sun and let the breeze blow through your hair, the convertible tops and where'd the time go? We're back! School is back in session. Students are matriculating through the buildings. They're no longer being a menace to their parents at home because their parents have additional outlets to send them out the door to go to school.
Yes.
We're back. To all those naysayers that thought because of decisions and direction this board did in, in, in the last three to four months that school is going to crumble, crumble and collapse and we're going to be sorry. Our attendance is up. My colleagues around the table have talked about the exciting enthusiastic things that they see going on in the buildings. I had the opportunity to be here for the first day back for the staff, which was well-attended. Then they had some additional professional, professional development training and quite a few of my board colleagues were also there. Had an opportunity, I've taken the opportunity to come over to the high school, middle school during the course of the day just to stick my head in and walk around and see what's going on. And it appears as though students are on task. And there is organized chaos going on throughout the building. I have not made it to Seminole or King yet, but, but I, I will make it to those buildings a couple of times throughout the course of the year to just to stick my head in and talk to the kids and harass some of the kids because they harassed me. And just, you know, just, just to show support. That sitting at this table is one thing, but going out and seeing and touching and seeing actually what's going on, it, I feel is equally important and all of us do that in, in some shape, form or another. Whether it be working with students, uh, with the travel club as Mr. Brewley does or uh, Ms. Jarrett coming in and being pivotal with the robotics club and the things that Doc is doing and Ms. Escalante and Mr. Mark have been doing and Ms. Walker. We all take this responsibility beyond just sitting at this table, uh, making decisions. We go out there and interact with people, we're not hiding from folks. I'd like to say special kudos and thank you to Mr. Hay for the programs that he talked about that they are initiating that would benefit, that benefits our students. And if it, if it's not for volunteers like Mr. Hay and the other volunteers that do so many other things above and beyond what we're able to do here, uh, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. And I take my hat off to those folks who volunteer their time to come in and, and assist and provide programming where they feel is necessary that benefits all, all of our students. The Trinity issue, as Mr. Brewley stated, we, we weren't happy at all with that situation. That's considered a lack of service. We all knew it's not their first year doing it. We apologized to our parents, our students, our staff and anybody else that was inconvenienced. Because things happen, but we really don't see why and how this, this should not have happened in the way that it is. And um, again, we, board members received phone calls. It was one of those situations that was out of our control, but it was our control, you know, just so to speak. So, we were not happy and uh, we, we were, uh, worked diligently with the, with the bus service to um, to ensure and assure that anything of this cal, this caliber doesn't, doesn't happen in the future. To the three and oh battling Mount Clemens football team Bathers. First time since nineteen ninety-seven. The, we started the season three and oh. They won the first home game. That was the first time we won the opening, the first home game of the season. Not the first game of the season, but the first home game of the season. That's the first time we did that since nineteen ninety-seven. So, uh, the football team has scored a hundred and eight points. The defense has given up zero. So, the, the, the coaches are, are doing a great job motivating the student athletes. Those coaches stress and I've seen them out of, if you're not getting it done in the classroom, I don't care how good you are, don't come out here on the field. Because if you're going to be on the team today and then next week you're not eligible, you're not helping us. You're hurting us. So, if you go plan to be ineligible, don't even come out here wasting our time. Because you're messing up something bigger than yourselves. And, and I appreciate and respect that, that aspect of what they're, what they're bringing too. The first game, I think I counted seventeen players. Game three, we had seventeen players on the sideline while eleven were in the game playing. So, with the school starting, with the team winning, that recruits students. Because I want to be a part of that. My friends are over here and they're winning, they're having fun, everybody's talking about us. I want to be a part of that. I've never played football in my life, but I want to be a part of that. And uh, so it, it's good to see that um, students are participating to our, to our girls volleyball team. They still, they're out there competing, they're doing the best they can. They have not turned that corner yet as the football team has done, but, but they're still out there competing hard. And in the, they're, they're scholar athletes, you know, just as, as the boys are. And we, we give recognition and kudos of those students also. Think that's it. Those are my comments. Nope, those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mark?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Jarrett. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at eight oh seven in the PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time and efforts.